Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. And Coach Ashley joined today by founder of Get Oil and Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, we're really glad you're here today and have some exciting things to share.
So excited to be with you guys today. We also have Julie here from our team. Hello Julie.
Hello everyone.
And the reason why we are so very, very excited to be with you, even more so that we are excited every other Thursday at noon Eastern time when we get together is that today we have Alex Henders here with us of Well-styled Essentials. Welcome Alex. It's so good to have you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
So today you guys, we are going to get into a lot. There's a lot to cover. Obviously, if you guys know Alex, come say hello. Either way, welcome her. You guys, we do this every single Thursday at noon Eastern time. This is an open call for anyone who is a brand partner with Young Living, you're looking to get a little smarter in how you share, save time, get more done with the work that you do and to learn from folks who are out there getting things done right now. This is your opportunity to get together and learn and of course, learn how to use your Get Oil link system at the same time. So I have just a handful of slides that I'm going to go through here, just some housekeeping up at the top. We're going to pop out a video and then come right back. And we're going to share all of our super exciting announcements and news. So without further ado, let's go ahead real quick and get into our slides. So again, welcome as always. This is our Get Growing Weekly Work Sessions and opportunity to get together and learn every week at noon Eastern US time. Today, we're talking about smart ways to use social media to get young living leads to grow your business. And of course, we will be hearing from somebody who has grown in a very smart way using social and continues to. And she is a really cool tool that you can use to get oiling system. We'll be talking about that today. So first, we are going to meet Alex from Well-styled Essentials. We'll learn how she grew to platinum using social media. We'll talk about her strategies and also when my keyboard is going crazy right now, forgive me you guys. And of course, we're going to be talking about some resources that Alex has created for you. There is a free resource you will be receiving on today's call. We'll be getting into that here in just a bit. And we're really excited to see you put this to you. And of course, today, as always, we will have live helping Q and A at the close of the call. I do have someone signed up for a live work review. If you can just let us know that you're here in the Q and A, that would be awesome. If you are looking for help, whether you signed up for a review or not, go ahead and add your questions to the Q and A. This is a live opportunity to work together. This is a chance for you to get your questions asked and to move past anything that might be keeping you stuck in the work that you're doing. So add this to the Q and A here if you're on the live call. And if you happen to be in our Facebook group right now, or you are watching this as a replay on YouTube in the future, you can go to get oiling.com/weeklyworksession to join one of these live calls on an upcoming Thursday. And if you would like to sign up for dedicated help on a live call like this one, go to get oiling.com/websitereview. And then finally, if you'd like a hand with getting things done, if you'd like for someone to do some of the work for you, you can get it get it get oiling.com/concierge. And you can learn about all of the different ways our team can help you grow. So let's go ahead and come back and chat with Alex, who we're so excited to have here today. So Alex, tell us a little bit about you, maybe your background with Young Living and how you got to where you are today with Well-styled Essentials.
Yeah, um, thank you again so much for having me. I'm super pumped to be here and just to chat with you guys today. But I'm Alex. I am the founder, creator of Well-styled Essentials. I live in the middle of Iowa with my husband, who's my high school sweetheart, and we have two twin daughters who are almost seven. And I, my career journey is kind of feels a little silly. So I got a degree in elementary education. And then as soon as I graduated, I went full time as a wedding photographer. So I started a wedding photography business while pursuing my elementary education degree and grew that business and said, well, I guess I got this degree for nothing because I'm going to be a wedding photographer. So I ran a wedding photography business for a little over six years. And in the midst of running that business, I was introduced to Young Living and fell in love with oils and started sharing about them. And then decided to start a business with Young Living. And so I grew my business entirely on social media and was able to retire from wedding photography to solely focus on Young Living and did that mostly only Young Living for probably a little over a year and then saw as I was running my business alongside of my friends who were also building on social media, I saw this need for people who didn't have the same background as me, this creative photography, graphic design type background, where they were spending so much time on content creation and it came very easily for me. And so I started creating resources for other people to use. And that's kind of how Well-styled Essentials was created. So we launched that in 2019 and started it solely as like a social media type resource where we focused on images and social media prompts and graphics. And then since then, we've, as I've learned more about business and things have kind of morphed, we've expanded a bit, you know, we still have our content, visual content, creation, subscription type thing with images and videos, but we've expanded as well to do more email marketing and just marketing in general. And it's been really great. And I'm just, I'm so thankful that I get to do this for my job. I love doing it and getting to help people.
muted. Hello, I'm back. So Well-styled Essentials started out with your stock photography and some of this content for social posts. But one of the things that we are going to be sharing with you guys today is Get Oil specific content. We'll plug and play content with Get Oil. So stay tuned for that, you guys. There is a free resource. You could even grab a thing that she's made to use. But you also do have, just so folks know, you have monthly subscriptions where people can actually get different types of content for you. Can you tell us just a little bit about what that looks like?
Yes. So yeah, like I said, we have our visual content subscription that has, you know, all of your visual resources like graphics, stock photos, videos, that sort of thing. And then just this last year, I think a little over a year ago, we launched more of the email marketing type side of resources. So we also have a monthly subscription for email newsletters and that is, you know, includes a resource link for Get Oil. So you can just use that link and it goes right into your Get Oil account. And so, and then we have also other more à la carte type resources as well, like an onboarding system for new customers, lead magnet templates, that sort of thing.
Fantastic. So speaking of lead magnets, let's talk a little bit about how growing on social has worked for you. And my understanding is, is that you were working in one way, just kind of going for it, right? Putting social content out there. But there was a turning point for you. So can you tell us a little bit about the journey of what was working and then what you decided to do differently?
Yes. So I really, for the first several years of my business, only was showing up on social media and would show up in stories or on my, you know, on my feed and try to create relationships and build out those relationships that way to, in order to grow my Young Living business. And I don't, I, I don't know exactly when, like what happened for me to have this like light bulb moment, but something made me be like, whoa, like if something were to happen with my social media accounts or whatever, I don't actually have a way to continue growing this business. So I started learning a little bit more about email marketing and how you know, I could leverage those relationships that I've already built on social media and then take them off and have a list and this community of people that are actually more mine, my community versus Instagram or Facebooks. And so I had already kind of actually been doing that. I would post things to get people to share their email address so that I could send them a more personalized email, but I wasn't super intentional with it. It was kind of just like, I'll throw it out there and hope something sticks type of thing. So yeah, I don't really know what it was. Something just made me realize like, oh wow, actually these aren't really like my leads unless I do something with them, if that makes sense.
So what did you then decide to do with them? Like, what did that look for, look like for you after? So you, basically what you were doing was you were making posts, right? And you were basically saying, you know, hey, DM me your email address and I'll send you some stuff, right? So what does that look like now?
Yeah, I'm just trying to be a little more intentional, basically. And so it's not this like crazy complicated thing. It was more so of, let's like shift this a little bit to be able to capture, you know, be more intentional of what I'm trying to share as a freebie or so not even a freebie, but just something to like get their attention and then having more of a system of like, okay, now I will, I'll still DM them this link where they can sign up and get their freebie or their, you know, if I'm doing some sort of promotion, their free diffuser, if they sign up type promotion, here's an email that's going to like break down how to get it or something along those lines. Just having more of a systemized strategy versus like, here's your email. So yeah, still honestly, it looks very similar. I'm still posting, still getting them to DM me or leave a comment and then I DM them. But then on the backend, having more of a strategy of like, okay, here's my signup page, my landing page, here's my, you know, welcome email that they're getting, et cetera.
Awesome. So can we talk a little bit about, you know, just thinking about how you're going about posting on social? And you guys, if you have questions, feel free to put those into the chat. Now, basically the genesis of all of this is that you decided at some point that you needed to have a funnel that you could share, right? So a landing page where people could put their own information in, you don't have to go and get their email and then put it in a system. You could actually give them a a thing that they could use to get the thing that they want from you. So you're, you're promoting a freebie in your posts and you're telling folks, maybe in this case, go to the link in bio, right? To learn more. So if we were to rewind just a little bit, because I know that there are a lot of folks in our community who are a little hesitant to, to post on social, right? We don't do a lot of training actually here with Get Oil on social media as a growth strategy. But it is a really important thing in like the holistic picture of your business, right? Like you can't just post a blog post and expect that, you know, thousands of people are going to come see it. The better place to go is where people are hanging out. So how do you figure out? And I assume Instagram is really the big thing for you, right? So how do you figure out kind of what you're going to offer and how you're going to talk about it?
Yeah, that's a great question. Again, I would say I used to probably just do whatever came to mind and throw it out there and hope something stuck. And I think that worked, maybe, you know, here and there, it might get you a couple leads or whatever, but something that I've learned in just my business journey is just like kind of the power of niches and leaning in. And I think this could be said a couple of different ways. I feel like I've even like trained on like the power of like your personal brand. I, in my brain, kind of equate them to be something similar of like, who am I? What do I love? What is easy for me to share about? Okay, that's like probably who I'm going to attract on social media anyway, because that's what's easy for me to share about. Let's lean into that. So for me personally, I feel like motherhood is a huge thing. So you know, whether it's like moms, like the stress for moms, you know, talking about that or how to make things easier with kids, you know, you could talk about the kids' sense line or whatever. But, but leaning into who I am and was and what I was actually like doing and using and then translating that to, okay, well, this feels pretty easy because I know how to post about this. I, or I know how to talk about this. I can then post about it. So I think that's the, the biggest thing is and I think it makes you feel more comfortable too. If it's something you're passionate about, lean into that. So if you're, you know, you have pets, you're really passionate about pets or whatever your, your, who you are, use that to then like niche down into what you're sharing about. I, hopefully that makes sense. I feel like I was a little scattered there.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's just, it makes it easier to, to talk about things that come easy to you. It doesn't feel as scary showing up on social media to talk about random things that you think you have to be talking about.
Yeah. How, how often are you talking about showing, mentioning Young Living products when you're posting?
Yeah. So I feel like this season has been just a weird season because I have not had a ton of mental capacity to be on social media in general. Feel like I'm just like getting out of that. We we adopted our girls two years ago and I feel like I've kind of been in a fog ever since then. And so I'm slowly getting back into a more of a routine and showing up on social media like intentionally. But, and I feel like that, I feel like I have to put a disclaimer on, on that, like that's okay. I'm okay with that. And if you like have to take breaks, that's okay. Like your business will always be there. And it's something that I'm learning of like, it's okay to say, it's good to take some breaks sometime. But as I'm like coming out of this fog, I am trying to, I really tried to be intentional depending on where I'm posting. I have a couple of different Instagrams. If I'm on my personal Instagram, I am not bombarding my, my people with sales all the time. I'm trying to be very strategic of still posting in what my brand is, my niche is, and trying to relate to people in that niche. But then sprinkling in, you know, the sales part here and there. I don't have a specific, like I've heard, you know, do five, four posts that are personal and then do a business post. I, I just do it kind of when it feels like, oh, I haven't, I haven't shared about this like for a while. Let me share about this because I'm using it right now. For my oils, I do have an oils account and that's like, some people say, don't do that. It's worked really well for me. I have a separate where I educate on solely like Young Living stuff. I still am strategic on when I'm quote like selling. Sorry. I'm trying to do, you know, several posts of education and then sprinkle in a selling type post. And with the selling, I also, that is like where I'm doing my freebie or my lead. So when I say selling, I'm mostly talking about getting them in my DMs to then get them into my system. So for that, I, I am more strategic of, I really tried to do three to four educational posts before I'm like doing a selling post, but I try to show up there five days a week. So that makes it a little, so it's like once a week, I'm trying to go in there. Now, if you're not posting five days a week, you could maybe do like three posts and then a sell. I don't know. There's, I feel like with social media, what I've learned is you just got to test things and see how they do and don't give up right away. Like keep testing and try it out. And then, okay, maybe let's change our strategy a bit and try something new.
Yeah. And that includes, I think, kind of switching up the way you're approaching your posts, right? So obviously a promotional post can be, here's my favorite product, it's on sale, but it could look a lot different from that. You could also have a post where you are coming from the perspective of a mom of kids, you know, you could have something that is just supportive, like, hey, mom, here's what happened in our house today. I feel you. If you're out there, you understand, like I see you, we're together. But then you could also do like a how to for her, right? Like mom, here's how you do something. So that's like, there's so many ways to kind of open that, unbundle that idea and turn it into lots of different pieces of content. You know what? I feel like this is an opportune moment to kind of address this question, since you brought this up. And I know that everyone here, if you've been a brand partner for any amount of time, you know that there is a seasonality to growing. And sometimes you just kind of need a season where you're kind of drawing back a little bit. And so Camelia asked about, she says, I need a session on coming back when life forces the necessity of breaks and strategies with the return. So as you are kind of coming back into normalcy, I don't like to use that word. This is all normal, all the time. But as, as, as you are sort of coming back into sort of like a ramping up to a goal type of presence, what is, what does a return look like for you? Like if you have been kind of quiet and you would like to sort of reawaken with your posting strategy, what does that look like for you? Or what would you recommend to somebody going through the same thing?
Yeah, also a great question. I feel like for me personally, I have just been trying to come in and be relatable. First of all, I haven't shied away of just disappearing. I make, made, have made several, I've done this several times in my business and every time I come back, it's like, hey, guys, I dropped off the face of the earth. Here's what's, you know, you don't have to like give every nitty gritty detail, but here's a little bit about what's been going on. I'm super excited to like come back and hang out with you guys here on Instagram or in your Facebook group or wherever you're like coming back to. I feel like those posts always resonate with people too and show, show it. It shows other people like they're not alone because it's not, it's not like unheard of to take a step back. Like we have to sometimes take a step back. And so just coming and being vulnerable of like, hey, I did this. I didn't tell you guys I was leaving, but I'm still here. I am excited to jump back in as kind of like the kickoff and then really focusing on providing value versus like coming and trying to like sell right away. Just, yeah, I took a step back from this community. I'm not going to come and like bombard you with what, you know, Young Living's doing right now, what's on sale or whatever. I'm just going to tell you sorry, about things I've been learning or products I've been using or just give you helpful, really focus on, on being helpful as, as you return back. And then as you know, you're, it, for me, I don't know if this is the case for everyone, but my engagement on social media just plummets after I've been gone. And so people don't see my posts, which I, I feel like that makes sense. The more you're posting, the more you're going to be in front of people and then you're gone, you're just not in front of people. And so also just really focusing then on trying to build back up that engagement. So I have found huge success showing up on stories. And specifically like showing my face on stories because it feels like we're FaceTiming, you know, like showing up, telling people you, you're filling your diffuser, showing them how you're filling your diffuser that day, or making your Ningxia and Zing drink, showing them how you're doing that. Or just like talking of like, here's what, you know, I've been learning. I think those three things of being vulnerable, addressing the elephant in the room, giving good valuable content and then trying to build back up that engagement by showing up where they can see your face, I think, has been my strategy at least, which I found to be helpful.
As someone who's also taken very long breaks from social media, the things that, that have, that I've seen boost engagement massively have been invitations to converse, right? Asking people to share their story or share their opinion, talk about themselves, whatever that looks like in the comments. Because that creates an incentive for people to engage and the algorithms, love it, love it.
Yes, yeah.
Awesome. Okay. So, so one of the realizations that you had when you were growing to platinum using social media was that you don't, you didn't own the list that you were communicating with. What if something happened to your social media, et cetera? So you set out from that point to start collecting their email addresses. You were doing that manually at first. Actually, I've got a couple of examples that you shared with me previously that we can actually show here. So this would be like an example of a post that you would make where you've got a pretty picture. And you are actually in these cases, you're talking about a product, but you're telling them to comment below or to DM you, right? If they wanted to learn more about these things. And then when they did, they would be able to then receive an email from you that, you know, has all of the notes, all of the information, right?
Yes.
And so this is a strategy that you still follow, right? I mean, not the like collector email manual, you're actually sending them to a link, they're putting their information in and it's, it's going out automatically. Yes, you're not doing the time consuming version that she wants to. So guys, this, this is an example of if you've got a great lead magnet or if you, even if it's not, it's not about the lead magnet, the thing that you're giving away, it's literally the email is the lead magnet. You can write an email and get oiling in a campaign. And that's the thing that they're getting. They just have to go to this, this page on your website or they have to text this code to your get oiling phone number and then they can receive whatever that information is in a message like this. So, so this is an example and I would like to point you guys in the direction of a really cool thing that Alex made for you. If you go to wellstyledessentials.com/GO for Get Oil. You can actually go and receive, I'll actually show you what the okay, this is the landing page where, where you will land. When you, when you go to that link, well, start essentials.com/GO, you can go here and you will actually get access to this free stuff that Alex has made for you. So can you tell us a little bit about what you've created here? Cause I see we've got post templates, right? So Canva post templates.
Yes. Yeah. So the first, yeah. The first thing are these mockups. So if you have, I created these specifically thinking if you had some sort of lead magnet that you wanted to share, I think you could use this too for your, like a screenshot of your email. If that's what you choose to do, but you just pop in whatever your, your freebie, your lead magnet, your email, whatever into these, and then you can use those to share on your feed, on, you put them in stories wherever you want. And then at the end, I created a couple of different mockups to use on the next part of the freebie. These, these couple will go in actually on the next part of your freebie too, that I can, I'll wait because I try to get ahead of myself often.
Here, let me go back to this. Here we go. So this is the PDF, everything in this PDF, you guys includes videos that Alex has created for you that shows you how to use these resources. You've got your mockup templates here. And then you actually get a page to put into your own good oiling account.
Yes. And so those, those mockups at the end of that Canva template can, you can pop right into this landing page too. So if you had a lead magnet and you wanted to use the same type of mockup on your landing page, those are in there for you as well.
Yeah. So this down here at the end, I can get to it. Yeah. So these would be actually what you would use to put onto your page, which is in this resource bundle right here. So you've got a landing page and a confirmation page. You're just going to want to create your campaign. However, you want to create it, right? However, it goes along with your lead magnet. And, and then you can complete the funnel that way. This is so cool. So we've got a video here on how to edit and save those mockups to use on social and on your page. And, and she also shows you guys how to edit and publish your page. Now, who here has a lead magnet that they're in love with? That you want to plug into these resources that Alex has created for you? Do you have one? Or do you maybe want one that's already done that maybe Alex made for you? If that's you, if you are looking for one that is done for you, she actually has here's the one that was used in the example here, top five essential oils lead magnet. And there are multiples, right? So you've got like an ebook template in here, several of them. And there are multiples, right? So you've got like an ebook template in here, several of those, right? And so if you wanted to purchase, you could actually get that and then you could plug this into that free resource.
Yeah. And these were created to be as close to done as possible for you guys. And so there are some things like you, you need to tweak like your about page or, you know, that sort of thing, but all of the info is there for these other than in the ebook, the neutral ebook template, that's just like a template, but the other ones have all of the info, the images, the design, it's all done and it's easily editable. My hope was in creating these that it was just like an easy button for you and your marketing efforts.
Yes. And these are, these are in Canva. So these are Canva templates that you're able to, you're able to get. And then once you create that your version of it, you save it into your Get Oilin' account into your file section, pop that into your campaign and you've got a complete funnel that of course is gorgeous. It's designed by a professional. So seeing a lot of yes, I want this. Shelley says, these are amazing. Definitely not my wheelhouse, but these are available. Yeah. So for those of you who are joining, who are not Get Oilin' members yet, you can get started with us for a dollar for your first month. Alex actually has a link. It's G O. So go. Dot wellstyledessentials.com and you can sign up and get half off of your second month with us. In addition to getting started for a dollar. So hope you guys take advantage of that if you haven't already. Being a lot of wow, these are gorgeous. It's true. She's very good at what she does. And so Alex, can you tell us a little bit more about what we can find on your website here on wellstyledessentials.com? And by the way, you guys, if you want to find your way here, you can go to getoilin.com and head over here to this content tab. Well, styled essentials is right here. So if you want a quick, a quick path to go and find all of the awesome stuff that Alex has created, that's where you want to go. So tell us a little bit more about what we can find here. So you mentioned a, there's a monthly subscription. But what else do we have? So we've seen the lead magnets and the ebooks. But what else can we find here? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. Okay. Yes, we have, excuse me, the monthly subscription. So all of that info is under the membership tab. You can get a little bit of a peek on that of what we offer. We have like sample galleries on there. We have the shop, which you guys have already seen. And then we also do blog weekly for just like tips and tricks for running your young living business. And I think, I think they're great. I hope that they're helpful. The blog posts are helpful for you guys. But then, yeah, so once you are a member, you get access to thousands of resources that are just at your fingertips. If you're email subscriber, we do a monthly email that again is mostly almost done for you. You just need to customize like your photo and your name and send it out. You can it's design, we give like Canva elements for you to, if you want to switch out any images or anything in your email. Otherwise it's all in Get Oilin' for you with the resource bundle link. Again, it's something that we, I just wanted it to be as much of an easy button as possible for you. So it's as close to done as I can make it without being you, if that makes sense. And then also with that email subscription, you get a couple bonus, very blank templates that I've seen, you know, our members use to put in at the end of their emails for any announcements that their specific team is doing, or if Young Living added a bonus announcement that wasn't in the email, that sort of thing. So yeah, did, did I miss? I feel like I probably missed stuff, but yeah, I just really love linking arms and working alongside of fellow brand partners and you know, expanding and brainstorming and figuring out what kind of content is needed for everyone. And I'm just really just honored that I get to do that with well-styled essentials.
Yeah, we're so excited that you have this content. I know everyone here who is not also a photographer and a designer who like the, who has time to do that on top of everything else that they do. Singing from the rooftops, right? Because this is something that can allow you to really show up in a really beautiful way and a meaningful way. And you guys, Alex is a really good copywriter. So if you're having her write your emails, this, it's good. It's, it's quite good. So you could actually, I'm, I'm on the most recent blog post here on well-styled essentials. And it actually talks about the, the resources for this month. So definitely come and check this out and learn a little bit more about what's here. This isn't just a done for you resource that plugs into your Good Oilin' system. And I mean, honestly, the done for you resource that plugs into your Good Oilin' system is worth the cost of admission. Hands down, but there are all of these other little pieces that you can use. And the way that you can customize this to make it look like you're the genius photographer, designer, copywriter. It's, it's pretty phenomenal. So does anybody have questions? If you have any, feel free to, you know, to, to raise your hand or to or to just pop into the chat or the Q and A. But definitely again, guys, get that freebie wellstyledessentials.com/go G O. And you can get access to that incredible resource. If you want a done for you lead magnet, you'll be able to follow the link there. There is asking, do you have classes there? So I think maybe what you mean by that or like educational, maybe educational resources or something that you could use like a class?
Yeah. So we haven't really ventured into the world of like class necessarily, like we don't have like a script or anything like that for classes. There are every month we give a monthly idea. So for our visual content subscription, we give a monthly idea guide that breaks down what we launched this month and how to use it in your business. And so there are things in there of like social media prompts, yes, but also like, here's how you can be talking about this and sharing about this that you could potentially translate into a class, but as far as like an actual like outline or even done for you class type thing, we have not ventured into that area yet.
Camelia asked, who are the videos targeted to brand partners or customers? So you have some stock videos, I think I assume is what, what she's talking about.
Yes. Yeah. So those are honestly targeted to, I think you could use them for I think, okay, actually I think I misunderstood. They're targeted for, they're, they're created for you to share and you can target your customers, your your social media audience to hopefully become customers. They're basically like videos that you can use for reels or YouTube shorts or that sort of thing, if that makes sense. So they're not like an educational, like someone talking type video. They're similar to a stock photo, but have movement as a video. So like a diffuser running or someone typing on their computer that you could use in a reel for I don't know what oil you're diffusing today for your workday or that sort of thing. Hopefully that makes sense.
Got you, got you. Alison asking how you might compare yourself to others who create content for the young living space? I feel like we spoke about this fairly recently and I think your response was something to the effect of, I stay so busy, I don't pay attention to what other people are doing. But how would you, like, how, how would you characterize that yourself?
Yeah. Um, I feel like that maybe is my answer. I truly, I think there's probably, oh, I know there's like incredible resources out there. I don't know. There's probably other people doing like stock resources and the same thing. I don't know. So I can't, I feel like I can't be like, well, this is how we're different. What I do know is the biggest thing for me with what I'm creating every month for our members is I want to provide them value and I want to make it as easy as possible for them to use what I'm providing. I want my customers, our customers to get the most out of their money because I know running a business is just really hard and like trying to figure out what resources to invest in when you have, especially if you're just starting out and you have limited funds to invest into your business. I just want to make sure that, that you're getting your money's worth. And so that's like what, what I'm focusing on every month is making sure that it's cohesive, beautiful, usable content, and it's a lot of it, basically.
Got you. Yeah. I don't think I've personally seen anybody that creates the, the combination of features that you pull together with the stock photos, the videos, the à la carte, like with the lead magnets. And I think where it comes to, you know, your, your monthly newsletter resource, you guys, the best thing that you can do is give it a try, right? And, and kind of see like what feels right and what feels best for you and what fits into the way that you run and grow your business. Bridget is asking, is the monthly subscription focused on the monthly offering? So like the gift with purchase? Or is it something that's more evergreen? Or do you do a combination? What does that look like?
Yeah, we do a combination. So every month I do, do images for the US gifts with purchase. So you get images and a stock video for that. And then that information's also included in the email as well if you're an email subscriber. And then the other content is more, I try to make it fit with what season we're in to make it, you know, like what you're going to be sharing about in your marketing efforts. But it's, it's, so I would say it's not necessarily always evergreen in that sense. So like the summer we did, you know, a, a buy the pool type shoot with products like sunscreen and zing and that sort of thing. So obviously like if you're in states that have different climates, that's not going to be an evergreen all year. But it's great for that season. And then we do, you know, sprinkle in other bundles too. So the when do we launch the? We have like thieves bundles, those sometimes launch in the fall, but you can use those every, every year. Oh, yes. Yeah. You can use it the next year. Sorry. I'm just seeing Bridget asking. So can that be used in the next, like next summer? Or if it's a seasonal thing, the next year? Yes. That content is there for you to use, you know, and search, we have a great search function. So if you are in the fall and you want to see what we've done in the past for fall, you can search for that sort of thing.
Awesome. So, so yeah, this, this is where like stuff, something is seasonal. If, if it works for this fall, the longest young living still has those products, it's going to work for next fall too.
Right?
Right. Awesome. So Alison, I, I think that there's, there's a lot of bonuses that are here. I think what we've talked about kind of covers a general basis of something that like what you're going to get every month in your subscription from well-styled essentials. But I would just again, if you're wanting to kind of compare to things that you've had before, I would just grab, I mean, it's easy to cancel, right? Like you're not holding anybody to a forever contract. You can go for a month and be done if, if, if you decide that it's not for you. So I would, I would recommend that you just kind of happen and give it a shot. Because you do have a lot of things to choose from. And, and again, because so much of this stuff is in Canva, you guys, this isn't just something that you put into your, your newsletter. You put it on your social, you use this to create pages. You know, for, for your lead magnets, for it, there's so many ways that you can use this because it's so design and image focused. So if the aesthetic that you can see on her website is something that vibes with you and your people, you're probably going to love everything that's in this and find a lot of ways to use it. And there's going to be a lot more where this came from, you guys, with like ideas of how to use content from well-styled essentials in your Get Oilin'. So definitely stay tuned. Like we look forward to having Alex out many more times in the future when there's new things or new ideas of ways to use things. If you guys use well-styled essentials, let us know how you're using it and what you feel is working best for you. And we can talk about that here on a call like this for sure. Oh yeah. I mean, she does have an annual option. It is a good thing. Bridget says, in my other businesses, I have things scheduled out six months to a year out. So that's important. Yeah. So you, you have the ability to reuse stuff that was there before, which is just fantastic. So if you're trying to, to work on November and you've got access to November content, like you don't have to wait for November to roll around. So there's just a lot of really great stuff there. Awesome. So let me see. I think that the pricing should be included on the website, Alison, on well-styledessentials.com. So if you want to head over there and check out the different membership options that she has, then you can get all of those details there. So Alex, is there anything else that you want to maybe share before we move into live help and reviews?
I don't think so. I'm just, yeah, thank you again so much for, for allowing me to come on here and chat with you guys. This is really great. It's just so fun to like be surrounded with friends who are doing the same thing. I mean, in the chat, you know, but still.
Yeah, we're, we're honored to have you here. And like I said, so excited to bring you back and, and to talk more about all the different ways that folks can use the things that you're creating in different creative ways in their Get Oilin' accounts. So thank you again. And feel free to stick around if you want to chat, if you want to answer questions. But I would like to bring Sari out, who signed up for a live work review today. And, and we're going to get into that section of our call. Thank you so much again, Alex. Thank you. How can we help?
Hi, nice to meet you. I just want to make sure you can see my face, right?
Uh, I can't, but I can hear you just fine.
Yeah, that's a, I'm a very visual person, so I'm trying to work on it, but I, I really don't know why it's not working. So I apologize.
Anyway, it's okay.
Yeah, I reached out to you. I grabbed a subscription to Get Oilin' a while ago. Then something happened in life and it's been kind of just laying low. And I'm a young living brand partner. And senior star at the moment and I'm absolutely passionate about the young living. But however, reality taken into account, I have had my own coaching company for soon 10 years. Working exclusively in multinational technical work environments and communities in the MIA area. So in Europe. And I have regular customers or businesses who I work with and built my work in cooperation with them. And I'm finding myself to be in a position where the last 10 years, my work has been in demand and I really haven't done any marketing. Having smaller businesses and sometimes new customers lined up. So kind of mouth to mouth reference. And I never done any marketing. And I have a website for my coaching business. I think I put it in the email or info somewhere. And something on my Get Oilin', my daughter is very tech savvy. She's helping me out when she can. And she's going to be my backup here. So what I'm looking at, if I may be very finished and point straightforward from you, what I'm wishing is I would like to see a combined website. I noticed some people have that. So putting in, in, under it, Avonon name and I have a separate page on the under the Get Oilin' website. And since I aim to start building my young living business, I like to take it step by step, understand it fully, get it done. So that would be my first thing. Simultaneously, as I now have a more structured year going forward with my coaching business and have intentionally reduced the hours there to allow to give me a little bit of time to focus on building the young living business. And I will dedicate a part of my time weekly on that. Sometimes even more, obviously, because I cannot nod. And yeah, so basically my first step, which I really need to help with, and I don't have time to do, is to do a light combination, having separate pages for Avonon oils and Avonon coaching. And I'm open to any kind of suggestions or cooperations with you. And I reached out when Greg sent a nice email asking if you guys can do anything for me. And just quickly message. And just quickly message. And now I realized in this webinar that you actually have this concierge page. So yeah, so basically I'm rambling a lot, but that's it.
Okay, so what it sounds like is, is you have, you have an established business and you would like to maybe take uh, the oils and kind of put them under the umbrella of that business. To some degree, um, you wanna maybe have it all on.
Half and half. I, I am intentionally, I'm gonna look how much moving over to the oil business being the main business, right? So more of a uh, mentor, because I do mentor coaching. And um, in house coaching, so about wellbeing, they're very related to young living oils. So maybe come up even with the name, just simply Avon on webpage. And then divide them, what does Avon do, focus on wellbeing, mental and physical and natural products or whatever. Just a basic idea I have, but like I said, I'm open to any suggestions.
Yeah, so it's really common on our platform to see people who have uh, both a coaching business and an oils business. What you'll see the majority of the time is they are either branding themselves, so they're them as a person. Or they're branding the coaching business because the oils are a supporting product for, for the coaching offerings. Uh, or there is some kind of uh, place where they intersect. And so I think that maybe if you've had something. Like Avon on living dot com or something like that, or even if you just use stuck with, with the coaching. Uh, basically removing just the oils part out of it, unless your entire business is just about oils. It doesn't really make as much sense to have the website be named that. So um, either going with your name or like you said, maybe coming up with a slightly different name. That could house both. Uh, but essentially what you would be doing is um, is instead of, of focusing on. I do coaching, I have oils. Uh, you focus on what the thread is that ties them together. So. Uh, this is, I have wellness information. I have information to improve your wealth, your um, work-life balance. Or whatever that might look like. And so once people arrive at your website, they can go and take advantage of the things based on the topics they're interested in. Because most people, unless you've already conversed with them about oils or coaching, they're not gonna just be going to your website because they wanna learn about oils or coaching. They're probably going to go because you wrote an interesting blog post about work-life balance. Uh, or you were interviewed on a podcast and you've got a blog post about it that you talked about on social media or something like that. And so when people arrive at your websites, instead of thinking, you know, I need to put a, you know, a coaching tunnel and an oils tunnel here. I would look at it more from the perspective of the topics of interest to the people you want to serve. And then once you get to that point where you're saying. Let's talk about creating, uh, you know, a balanced daily routine. That's where you can weave in. You could use oils here. And by the way, I have a coaching program. If you're looking for a way to create more structure and you can buy that here. So it just, they become two things that the website can sell. Uh, but the website isn't really about the things you're selling. It's about the person that you're serving and the things that they're interested in. Does that make sense?
Totally makes sense. Thank you. I'm already having ideas in my head. Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, good. No sense. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. And don't hesitate. If you feel like there are. Specific places on your website where you want to be able to tag somebody as oils interested or coaching interested. You can certainly do that, right? So if you had, you know, for instance, a, a guide on how to use essential oil. In an office space or something like that, then one of the tags that you use in your um, your landing page. Uh, could be oils or oils lead or something like that. Um, but, but they, they, they're not necessarily like the. You're seeing the profit centers as like the information silos where the information silos really uh, ought to be. Uh, the stuff that your person that you want to buy those things is Googling right now. Uh, and, and the theme of the content they're consuming. So yeah, I'm excited to see what you do with this, sorry.
Yeah, me too. Um. I just, it, it makes so much sense what you said. And please remember for me, um. I need something to grab on and you just gave it to me. I've been ten years ha, is a long time and. And I admit I come from a, a little bit more old fashioned way of thinking of marketing and everything. Because I haven't done anything, you know, really. So I'm happy to have my daughter who's young and tech savvy and. Active on social media to support me along this road journey. But um, question for you. If I would like to proceed and I have my idea, how do I go about to contact you or somebody else within get oiling? To help me do the graphics or whatever, or build up that website on get oiling the pages?
Yeah. Yeah, so i- if you go to good oiling dot com slash concierge, there's actually a link there you can follow and you can tell them what you're interested in. And then uh, they can book a call with you and you know, get a quote, et cetera. That um, is how you've moved forward there.
Okay, pretty simple. I think that's all I need for now. Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming out. It's good to have you here. Awesome. Great questions. Uh, it's awesome to, to, to hear that direction that you're taking there. Sorry. And um, guys, how great is Alex's stuff? I hope that you are going and checking it out and taking advantage of the free thing that she's provided for you here. Um, it's gorgeous and the Canva templates are so useful. Uh, so that is uh, well styled essentials dot com slash go. You can of course also always visit our content partners page uh, to learn more about everyone that we work with and who creates. A specific content for your get oiling system. Uh, and yeah, that we, we can't wait to hear from you. When you start using her stuff, let us know. How it's working for you. Where are you using those gorgeous Canva templates? Are you, are you a little out of the box? A lot of us get a little outside of the box. So if somebody creates a class, that class could turn into seventeen blog posts, guys, right? So let us know what you decide to do uh, with what uh, she's created. I hope you guys take advantage of it. And uh, we will be back the same time next week. I think we have one more question coming through here. I'm gonna make sure I get that before we go. Um, yes, Camelia, the link that's provided will go to her website, well styled essentials dot com slash go. Uh, that's where you're gonna be able to put in your name and email and you'll get access to the PDF. That has a full walkthrough videos, uh, links to the Canva template, links to the get oiling resource bundle. And all of the tutorial on how to get it done. And of course, if you would like to kind of um. If you'd like to go up one uh, and, and actually get a, a lead magnet that she's created, you could certainly do that there as well. So um, awesome. Thank you, guys. We will be back same time next week. Take care, everybody.